Called to order the joint city council school committee meeting. This meeting is for to provide information about the middle school proposal and design. There's going to be a presentation from where this project started and to where we are now. On the committee, there is city councillor Dan Brezlin. There's school committee member Niles Crochet. There is city councillor Juan Anderson Burgos. City councillor Gladys LaBrow Martinez. A school committee member Rosalie Tinsley Williams. And myself on the chair, I'm Dennis Brooks. From Jones Wissit Architects, they'll be doing a lot of the presentations. We have Dory Brooks, Christian Woodslip. And we also have Marvo Jones from there also. And Rachel Leflo. Also here is the project design manager, Margaret Wood. She's here somewhere. Hello. Steve Wright is here also. And our mayor Alex Morris is also here. I'll just say a few words. So we're going to see the presentation first. After the presentation, there will be time for public discussion. That public discussion will allow people who want to speak to make a statement and/or ask a question. You will be allowed two minutes to do so. If you do have a question, that question will be answered and they're the next person who wants to speak or come up and speak out. Okay? We can vote now. We can get the public discussion piece out of the way. Anyone who want to make a motion for public discussion?
I'd make a motion that we have a public discussion tonight.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so public discussion will take place right after the presentation. So without any further ado, it's Dory Brooks to take it over.
Absolutely. Just as a point of clarification, should we... Do you need us to speak into anything? The mics are not connected?
I hope that they're on because the power... So good evening, everyone. You heard Mr. Brooks make reference to a presentation that a lot of work went into. It was very lovely and nice, but because the power's out, you just can have to pretend that there's very nice slides here on this board. So we apologize about that, but I know the gas and electric company is working as best they can to get power back on. And because of the generator here, we are lucky enough to have some lights. So I do want to thank Dory and the entire team for working hard to get ready for tonight. So we figured we'd take advantage of the folks who showed up tonight to at least go over the presentation verbally and, of course, provide an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions, learn a little bit more about the project. And anyone who signed in, of course, if you put your email address, we'll make sure to email you a copy of the slide deck that was intended to be presented tonight. I would also just let you know that this certainly isn't the first, nor will it certainly be the last, opportunity for all of you in this room or people at home to ask questions and learn more about this project. This has been an ongoing process and so please don't think that this is the last time or venue that we'll be able to have a substantive conversation about the merits or importance of this project. I wanted to address a few thoughts. So how did we get here, first of all? There's been conversations about constructing a new school building in the city for many years now. We have looked at different sites for a long time. When Dr. Wright joined us nearly four years ago, we did a lot of listening sessions with students and teachers and parents and community members. And one of the biggest themes we heard from people in the community was an interest and desire to go back to the middle school model in the city. So right now, we have K through eight schools that are neighborhood-based. And as you can imagine, depending on where you live, what neighborhood school you go to sort of dictates the quality of middle school education, what facilities you have in those spaces. And so we see this project as a big issue of equity as well. And so when we look at different school buildings, and we'll talk about this more specifically tonight, you may think, well, we have this other building or why the Peck site, why the Lawrence site? So in November of 2016, we kicked it off with the facilities assessment. And so we worked in partnership with the Mass School Building Authority, the NSBA, where they looked at every city-owned school building in the community and they ranked it based on the repairs that are needed, how worthy of it is it to reinvest in the school, is it a low priority, a high priority? They looked at properties like Lynch, actually even refused to look closely at that given the condition of the building, the location, and other properties there. In February of 2017, we completed the long-term plan. And then in March of 2017, almost two years ago, we filed a statement of interest with the Mass School Building Authority to move forward with studying the possibility of building two brand-new middle schools in the community. A few months after that, we hired a painting company, and so Dory and her entire team as the project manager and architects, or painting company, sorry, Margaret and her entire team. I knew you were looking at each other. And Margaret's here somewhere.
I'm here.
Back there. And so Margaret has really been our project manager, quarterbacking a lot of these efforts in partnership with Dory and the team at Jones Wissit Architects that you'll hear a little bit more about tonight. And then earlier this month, we finished up the schematic design for the projects as well. As part of this, we've also, just so you know, we have what's called a school building committee. And so for over a year now, members of the school building committee that are made up of a couple of city councillors, school committee members, community members, city staff, school department staff, they've been meeting at least twice a month over the last year. And so there's been a lot of time, energy, commitment that have gone into this process to lead us to where we are tonight. Devin has been the building committee chair, really helped moving this process along as well. And so I alluded to this before about sort of the K through eight model and how it lends itself to inequities in the public schools. And so when we think about where these schools go and why it's important to have a six through eight configuration, equity is really at the heart of why we think this is the best path for our students and for our city. It was in 1989, over 30 years ago, that the city saw the last new school being constructed in our community. And when you compare that timeline to other communities, Holyoke is much further behind in terms of new schools being built in our community. So not only an issue of equity in terms of making sure our students get a great facility for their education, but also an issue of equity for the city of Holyoke in general to see its first new building being constructed in over 30 years. We also get questions, well, why two middle schools? Why not just one? And so again, equity within the system where if you build one middle school for only 550 students instead of two for all 1,100 middle school students we have, how do we decide what neighborhood or what kid deserves what type of education or what type of facility? And so we think it's really important that we look at the geography, we look at the neighborhoods of where our students come from and making sure that all students, every middle school student that comes to the Holyoke Public Schools, has the opportunity to go through one of the state-of-the-art schools in the city. We did look at cost and so we explored renovation of some of our existing school buildings, did review some of our existing school buildings plus the new options. And at the end of the day, when presented with all of the facts, the finances, demographics, population information, the committee made the choice that I certainly support that two middle schools, one at the Peck site, one at the Lawrence site, were the best options for our community. And the education component, working with Dr. Wright and the entire team at the public schools, we understand that, yes, really great, brand-new, constructed middle school buildings are important, but it's also just as important what's happening inside of those buildings once they're open. And so we've been having really great conversations with teachers, making sure that the curriculum, the design is conducive to the best possible education and programming happening within those facilities as well. And so tonight, we'll just get a little bit more in detail as to the process, as to how we got here tonight, these two sites. Answer any questions that any of you have. But I will just say that I'm very passionate about this project. We'll end the night talking a little bit about the next steps. And so this project certainly won't happen on its own. Just, you know, we didn't get here by happenstance. A lot of people worked really hard to make this happen. And we won't make these projects happen without making sure, as many people in the city of Holyoke are educated about the importance of this project as possible. And then at the end of the night, I'll talk a little bit about where we go from here and upcoming city council meetings and decision-makers and decisions that need to be made with our input and support in the coming days, in the coming weeks, in the coming months. So thanks again for being here and I'll hand it back over to Dr. Wright.
So good evening, everybody. And I was trying to build on what the mayor spoke to. Is these, the school, when we looked, one of the things that the initial study revealed when we did it, we had an outside company come and look at our facilities, which really shocked me at the time, was that none of our buildings were appropriate for middle school education, 20 percent. So even Peck, which was built as a middle school, was wholly inappropriate for what 21st century learning had to look like for the middle school grades in terms of, I mean, if anybody's been to Peck, it doesn't really take a lot to see that circular shape, it's the way that the building is constructed does not lend itself to, in terms of aesthetics, lighting. The facility itself, while it was designed for middle school, isn't appropriate for what we're looking for in 21st century. A lot of the classrooms don't have windows, heating and cooling is, it was a mistake from the moment it was built in terms of its design and certainly not appropriate for what we need for 21st century learning. And so that was the only build. Lynch had been off, out of our portfolio. And so it became very clear in conversations with both the community, school committee members, and then talking to the educational team, that we really had to rethink middle school in the Holyoke Public Schools because it was a gaping hole in terms of not only facilities, but also in terms of programming. And so that was the recommendation that came forward from the building committee that we supported in moving forward and looking at rethinking the middle school experience in Holyoke. At the time, so when we contract, when we spoke to MSBA, they found that our plan was compelling, this idea of studying the middle school facilities. And we ended up looking at a variety of different options for middle school. We looked at, looking at one school of about 1,100 students. We looked at two school options. We looked at renovation. We looked at both additions and renovations. And then we looked at new school options. And in the end, what we decided on was that the best option was two new schools of about 550 students each. That one big school of 1,100 was unwieldy in an urban setting and that having seen other educational models, that one large middle school of that many students between grade six to eight was not going to be in the best interest of the city. And at one point, people do remember that Peck was almost that big and people had concerns with the size of a school that big. And so we settled on the idea with the proposal of two new middle schools of about 550 students each, looking specifically at two sites that were closest to where the majority of our students live and on two sites that the, it was very clear to us that the facility was inadequate. So the Peck facility was inadequate, was deemed inadequate. And then the Lawrence facility was inadequate. And we had space to build and you'll learn more about exactly where the plan is to locate the two schools, but at the Lawrence site and the Peck site. Part of the, part of that review and that proposal included, which has been a concern all along about our district finances and the way our scales of efficiency. Right now, I believe we run way too many schools for the number of kids that we serve. We're, we serve about 5,300 students. We run 12 schools. We use 11 buildings. That's a lot of buildings, a lot of smaller schools. And we aren't able to use the dollars that we are allocated and the city does fund us at the minimum level that were required to be spent, but we're operating way too many schools. And so in our proposal that we shared in the spring of 2017, as we worked with the School Building Authority, was that we would be able to pull, if we were able to build two new schools, that we would pull outdated facilities offline and that as a school system, we would be running fewer schools. So in that proposal, for those of you that remember, we would close Lawrence School. We would close Peck School. A Peck School would be torn down. We would close MedCaf School. And McMahon School would come offline as an elementary, but we, as a district, we're trying to expand pre-K options. That McMahon could possibly be used for an early childhood facility for the school district. But that would be four buildings that are currently in use that would come offline and to be replaced by two new middle schools and then we would redistrict elementary school students across the city. We would then, at that point, we'd be running seven or eight school facilities. And we believe, our projections are, that we would save approximately $4.5 million annually that could be put back into programming for the school district. About half a million in one-time costs and the other $4 million in annual costs beyond that. So that has been our plan and our proposal all along. Now, I will point out, and I just want to echo what the mayor said, we don't believe that magically new buildings is what creates new schools. We do think facilities play a significant role in improving the quality of the educational experience. I mean, I'd love to be able to show people what our buildings look like when it rains, when it's hot, when it's cold. We have terrible heating and cooling systems. And I think our maintenance crew does a phenomenal job with what they have to work with. But our buildings are wholly inadequate for the extreme changes in weather, which you all know very well in New England, that really do unpack kids' learning. And I ask any of you to, if you have to, you know, I'm fortunate, I sit in an air-conditioned building. But I have, but any of our, any of our kids and teachers who sit in buildings where it's 100 degrees because the windows don't open at Peck School, that's just, that's, that to me is a huge injustice to what our kids deserve to have. It doesn't matter who the child, we have multiple situations of that across the district. But I also know that, we also know that a quality school is more than just a facility. And so as a school district, we, projecting that we hope that we'd be getting new buildings, we've started already to rethink the middle school model right now. We've opened three new middle school programs. One here, the STEM program, which is a science, technology, engineering, math program here at the D campus. We've partnered with Veritas School to open a middle school on Peck's campus. And at the Peck School, we've launched a one-to-one initiative for middle school students, trying to prepare ourselves for moving into a new facility, new facilities, and that we would be prepared with a model that would live up to brand-new, the brand-new facility that kids would be moving into. We, as a district, have not done middle school well. And I own that, we own that, for many years. And even in my three years here, I still see it as the biggest hole and challenge in this school system. Not saying we're perfect at the elementary level or the high school level, but we have invested a tremendous amount in our programming. We've seen more gains at the elementary level, the pre-kinder and K to two level, I mean, early childhood level. And at the high school, we've seen much more improvement than what I see in our middle schools. We're pretty stagnant. And our parents are telling us, our kids are telling us that, and the outcomes reveal that as well. So we have a tremendous amount of work to do to redesign that whole experience. And the school buildings are, I, we believe, a significant part of giving kids an experience they deserve to have. When we can concentrate our programming, the, you know, the programming, the curriculum resources and the supports in two facilities, we can offer a lot more than what we do offer right now in K to eight experiences where there's only 80 to 100 middle schoolers not getting the arts experience, the, the, the science lab experience. Teachers are being asked to teach multiple grade levels, multiple content areas, which plays a role in our retention issues, challenges as a school district because no middle school teacher devoted to their content wants to teach multiple grade levels and multiple content areas. If you're a science teacher, you want to teach science. If you're a math teacher, you want to teach math. And we're asking our people to teach science and math and to do that across two grade levels. That's significant when we're trying to retain our most talented teachers and recruit folks to come to the school system. So this is, this is an important move for us as we redesign the entire district. And that's one of the reasons why one school, beside what the mayor said, which is critical, it's an equity issue for all kids having access. But just building one school doesn't achieve the whole school system moving toward an elementary, middle school, and high school model. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our architects.
Just one second before we, before we move on. I'd like to let people know that even though power is limited, this meeting is still being recorded. So if you want to watch it again another time, you'll be able to do that on the public channel. And also anyone who is not, will be able to watch this meeting again on the public channel also at the waiting room.
We've also been passing around how to get your address so that we can send you the presentation we're going to make visually so you can, you know, replay the tape of your head against the pictures and see how it turns out the second time. I'm going to pick up from there that I think Dr. Wright did a great job of explaining something that we really want to speak to, which is that, you know, as architects, we know that we don't replace teachers in teaching to students. But what we want to do and what we're skilled at doing is providing the environments in which teachers can do their work very well and environments in which students can learn. So while, if you're not somebody who spends time in schools or with students, it might be easy to assume that a building is a building and square footage is square footage. The quality of the spaces we create and how they're designed around the needs of students are really critically important to those students and their outcomes. And things have changed a significant amount in school design since your last school was built. And what we have done, our team is, focuses primarily as a firm on designing colored schools. We're very skilled at working with the MSBA's program, which also means that our job in coming in was to listen to what the district aimed to do and bet that against our own professional experience and our ability to listen and observe and visit the schools that exist, ask questions, dig further, and really test fit some of these ideas. So I, I'm going to run some of this by quickly because we've touched on it already, but I do want to fill in a couple of gaps about how this process laid out. So we were brought in in January and by then the district had stated its goal of finding middle school space for 1,100 students. And the site that the MSBA accepted to review was Lawrence School, but they'd also accepted Peck as a site to review. And we, those were the sites and we got right away to work exploring the buildings. As a firm, we're well-known for our preservation work, so we explored it quite genuinely in both projects to see what renovation potential there was. But we also asked question about location. Were there other sites in the district that made sense? And the district was pretty sure that there weren't, with the exception of the Chestnut Street site right across the street from Lawrence. It was a vacant urban site. And the advantage of the Chestnut Street site is that it's already in the master plan, dedicated to the potential use as either a school or as housing. So it was already kind of on the books and it fit the city's goals for it to be potentially a school. But there were other sites that we wondered about, you know, do you want these schools close to each other? Why not outside, you know, beyond 91? So we asked if we could look a little bit further. We looked at McMahon as a site, which seemed potentially promising because it was a very large lot, but it was also already under, under the school district's control, so there's no site acquisition issues. The problem with McMahon is it had wetlands issues, so that was eliminated as an option. We looked at an undeveloped parcel on Whiting Farms that was a very nice site, very interesting to imagine, a school in the woods, if you know that area, kind of near the K mark, behind the fire station. But that site would have been extremely expensive from a site development standpoint to take really undeveloped land and put the money into just carving up to get up to the top of a hill near the highway to develop it. We could fairly quickly rule that out as a viable site. We heard from the community about renovation, so we went back and reviewed all the information on Lynch and looked at why it didn't make sense to renovate Lynch. And we agreed with that decision for a couple of reasons. Primarily the fact that you can't expand the footprint of the building because all the recreational land is Article 97, meant that you'd have to build right there where Lynch is. And it was designed in an earlier era in which there were a lot of constraints on the size of the classroom, accessibility was a concern. And to expand to meet the program needs was not viable at the, at the Lynch site. So we were glad that that wasn't on the table, but we did do the job of looking at it. And then we went back and started the process of looking closely at how a renovation would potentially work at Lawrence or at Peck. And we, at that point, we sort of narrowed in and started really expanding and fitting the program into those two schools. So a lot of what we've referenced is the idea of 21st century learning. So again, schools built in 1930, as Lawrence was, don't necessarily easily accommodate the kinds of teaching that's happening today. The district currently provides a great deal of resources to students who are learning at different speeds, what they call differentiated learning. And they're having to do that by making do in buildings that weren't designed to provide unique spaces for different types of support. So making that change in Lawrence was possible to do, but we would have had to add a significant amount of square footage to the building. And because of the inefficiency of designing around an old school, we would have added probably about, I think it was 15,000 square feet more than we might have if we were able to do it. So when we costed out the idea of a new 550 at Chestnut or a new, or an ad renovation at Lawrence, Lawrence was more expensive. Not only because it was being renovated and it was an old building and there was a lot of costs, as we have a lot of carpenters there, so you guys know that there are costs associated with that, but also because it was an inefficient program that way. It was going to have to be a bigger school and there would have been no outdoor space. So the Chestnut site served as a better location to build a new school by our opinion, after not just looking at the site and exploring it, but also exploring the soils of the site, testing out on how a building might fit in. We did various iterations of a potential design and then we costed those out and determined that between those two sites, new made more sense. We also did the same thing at Peck and explored the idea, in fact, we pursued a few different ideas for an ad renovation at Peck. By our assessment, the two main buildings at Peck were not really viable to restore. The gym had some real value as a building, but the cost of really renovating the gym to even serve as a gym again didn't really make as much sense as it did to build a new gym and really improve the problems at that site. So the problems at that site, as we identified, is there's really no good connection to the high school. It's very difficult. There's a very dangerous area behind the school in the dingle that needed to be improved. And it needed to connect to the neighborhood in a better way. And part of it was, you know, that it was just too tight in its relationship to the neighborhood. So we, we explored that and we explored the cost of doing these different renovation options. And again, found that even with the cost of demolition involved, it made sense to remove Peck entirely and build a new school at Peck. Along the way, we came to the idea that if we designed these two schools to be very similar, working from the one site that had the greatest constraints, which was the Chestnut site, then we could very efficiently move that building to the second site and essentially achieve equity, which was the school district goal, as well as potentially a great deal of efficiency, both in design and construction. So that ended up being the plan that we moved towards where the Chestnut site, which is a fairly limited urban grid, we worked very efficiently on that site. We developed a plan where the first floor would serve as a very important public area and really connect to the community and offer a lot of public resources and bring back, you know, arts and music at the middle school level, bring back a gymnasium at the middle school level. The outdoor spaces would bring back resources. And then the upper grade, upper floors would provide the grade-level community that we felt was going to be really helpful to bringing back a quality experience for students at the middle school level. So those ideas gel and we carry those ideas forward and, and we took the plan to do two schools to the MSBA with rough ideas of cost at that point. And they actually supported that idea, which is a pretty remarkable thing that has only happened in one other city in the state. And part of it is that they really want to help Holyoke. I mean, there are issues that obviously have brought Dr. Wright into the city and the state is invested in seeing this succeed. So that was an exciting moment. So we entered into the schematic design phase and at that point, we really opened the door to trying to do as much outreach as possible to the community. And if you saw on the screen right here, you see that there's a long list of public meetings that we've had where we've actually asked the community to participate in the design process. And I see some teachers in the room who've been working with us. We created an advisory group of 20 teachers that we met with because Dr. Wright is right that it's not just about building a building. If we could bring a design from another city and place it here, it would not work. We needed to understand the specifics of what was needed in Holyoke. And we also need to help generate a faculty and a policy as to how these resources were going to be used. Because in some ways, it's time in a way for the whole district to evolve its thinking around adolescent education. And by having teachers a part of the design process, we started to have really important conversations about what kinds of experiences are necessary at that age level and how we can... can provide that. And what we also found along the way is we really needed to show people what new schools look like. And I'd say that's something I would mention to people, is that it's really important that you see new schools and understand the difference between the schools that you've had in Holyoke for quite a long time and what many cities in the state are using as schools at this age level and at all age levels. There's an investment happening in education, and you should not be limited in the quality of education you provide based on your zip code. And this was a real eye-opening experience, I think, for a lot of members of the Advisory Building Committee and the teachers that we worked with, to go and see schools in other parts of the state that had been recently constructed. And you'll see some pictures when you take a look at that. So I'm going to pass it off soon, but I want to talk a little bit about our priorities as designers. So we have this job of balancing so many issues, communities' concerns about how to make public space in the building, how it's going to fit in the landscape, how it's going to relate to the architecture of Holyoke. But our primary goal is always the student experience. And this is where we actually spent a great deal of time kind of thinking about what kinds of relationships a school can create for students, how creating team environments. So instead of having, you know, the same experience you might have had if you went to Peck, I don't know how many people went to Peck, where you were circling around in that circle, you know, to get to your next class, what we've decided to do is design around the idea of neighborhoods. So we would break a school of 550 students into six communities of 90 students. And those communities are defined by a particular area, it's sort of like a dead-end community all of its own. And that space, that neighborhood would have in it four to five full-size classrooms, a half-size classroom, and small group rooms. And the district wanted, and was very intentional about saying that we want support staff, we want administrative staff moving up into the building and being close to where students are learned. So the whole idea, both as a series of systems and support systems, is to bring what students need to where they're learning and create an environment that's safe and supportive and nurturing for students so that they can learn as best they can. That the schools will be one-to-one, the schools will have the resources of 21st century learning environment. And along the way, we've talked a lot about what professional development we need schools like and how those can be provided in the school as well. So that's the real lynchpin of the design, and that idea of that cluster is repeated in both schools so that they're the same. And then there are differences by site that you'll see when you see the final design. So that's the starting point on the design, and they're going to show you the plans.
Margaret, what is it, schedule?
About schedule?
Yeah. I think you can come back.
Everybody who's sitting here, you know, like, yeah. They've seen us.
My name's Christian, I'm with Jones with Architects, and this is Rachel from Versus Design Group, our landscape architect. And we've been tasked to show you the architecture and the site plans, which we can't really do tonight, so I was not an English major, but I will try and describe it instead of showing it to you. So as Dory mentioned, we really, in designing these middle schools, started with kind of the classroom and the idea of clustering these classrooms into smaller neighborhoods. So the building is basically shaped like a big L, and so that each end of those, of the wings of the building, we have that neighborhood. So a very different feeling than you would get, you know, we're talking a lot about the Peck school tonight, but compared to Peck where it's kind of a radial plan, this is very much to get kids and teachers to feel part of a smaller community within that larger school of 550 students. So we'll start with the Chestnut plan because that's kind of a little bit easier to understand, but we're proposing a four-story building, and the first story is really, we're trying to open it up to the community as much as possible. So we have the cafeteria, stage, gymnasium, tech classroom, library, administration, all on the first level, really trying to open the school up for community use and also to show off what the students have been doing. We have kind of performance spaces or small informal stages in certain parts of the building. That tech classroom, very deliberately placed on the first floor so that people will be aware of what is going on inside of the school. And then on the floors above that, we basically have a sixth grade split between those two neighborhoods, and then seventh grade, and then eighth grade. As Dory mentioned, we have special education spaces and support spaces sprinkled throughout the building, so you don't just have one kind of, you know, ostracized area where it's just special education needs, but that's really spread across the building, as are the administration offices. We have an art room up on the fourth floor that's going to have beautiful light. And for the Chestnut site in particular, we really thought about the entrance of the building being diagonal from the library square. And so that was really critical in our thinking in terms of how to make this inviting to the community, a masonry-clad building that fits in with the community, that honors the history of Holyoke while still celebrating this new, this new middle school. And first, you want to talk about the site?
Sure. With school projects, every space counts towards learning. So when we think about how the building, the school building fits on the school grounds and how the school grounds together fit in the neighborhood, we're really thinking about how to maximize learning opportunities for students on the campus, but also provide a community use for residents in the area. In both Peck and Chestnut, the L-shaped building, which is similar footprint in both buildings, allows us to have an area outside of the building and immediately adjacent to it that's protected by two wings of the school, directly accessed by the cafeteria, the main entrance, lots of eyes on the space where lots of activities can happen. At the edges of that, it becomes really important to keep that threshold between school grounds and public zone. And we've taken a lot of care in thinking about the placement of paths, landform, planting, seating areas, so that it's both welcoming and protective. In searching for inspiration, we went as far as looking at the state's middle school frameworks for education for science, math, and English, and looked at ways to pull that into those spaces outside. So we're doing, it's design and, so it's a seating space and a place to explore the periodic table. It's a place to hang out with your friends, and there's a paving pattern that the math teacher can make you go out and measure the difference between metric and parallel. There's a climbing wall, but it's also a science, a place to keep returning to look at a cross-section through Holyoke's geology and time. And then in both schools, that L-shaped structure of the building and those outside spaces become very easily transferable between the two schools, so they're very similar between the two schools.
So on the Peck site, we really, if you think about the building now, it's a series of two octagons and then a gym off to the side, right? So it's kind of now like this, and it's tucked in, and it really hugs that community, and there's no real sense of arrival. You have that long parking lot, and then the building is just there, and it's kind of sandwiched between the residential side streets. And so we basically flipped that plan the other way, so now that the L that we took from Chestnut provides for the sense of arrival as you come to the school. So it's going to feel much more open to that neighborhood than it does today. The layout of the plan is very similar to what we proposed for Chestnut. We have the gymnasium, will be accessed off of the second floor because of the topography of that site. So on the first floor is just going to be cafeteria and stage, again, the library and the tech classroom and the administration spaces. And then again, the sixth and the seventh and the eighth grade on the floors above that, organized exactly the same way as Chestnut, again, for equity's sake and then also for simplicity and in terms of some cost savings for the city.
And that move also allows us to separate out parent drop-off and bus drop-off for safety issues and services ticket. We have an area for services and delivery to that back in both schools. In the case of Peck, it's on the north side toward the dingle. In the case of Chestnut, it's in the corner between town and the campus.
I just wanted to talk a little bit about the sustainability issues that we've been addressing and hearing from the community as we've gone through this process. We've got some unique opportunities here in Holyoke that were sometimes seen as challenges, but then turned into opportunities. So for instance, the school's heating system is really going to be almost entirely based off of mini-split and heat pumps, so it'll be electrically sourced off of hydropower and electricity and solar power from Holyoke gas and electric. So it's really a unique situation and one that can be a huge benefit to the district. We're proposing a cross-laminated timber floor diaphragm system, which is basically a new way of laying two-by-fours on top of each other and sandwiching them all together to get a very efficient building, very strong, and it really echoes some of the architecture that you see in Holyoke, a lot of the industrial buildings downtown. So we have come up with a system that takes the best of both worlds. It's still a metal structure system, but with this cross-laminated timber for the floor diaphragms, which also reduces the greenhouse gas emissions of the construction process considerably, right? It's a carbon sink instead of spending carbon producing concrete or steel. We've spent a lot of time with Rachel looking at onsite water retention, which is a really important aspect in all development in Holyoke with the city's stormwater system. We want to pay particular attention to our stormwater retention. As we've designed the building, we're really focusing on long-term sustainability goals that will pay back the district over time. So we're looking at a building envelope that's 20% better than the stretch code, really looking at super-insulating this building so that you spend as little energy down the line as possible. And then looking at designing for well-being, designing for the students, so that it's a productive space for learning. So that's looking at materials and non-toxic finishes and day lighting and acoustics for the classrooms, all of which are critical for the schools' continued success. I'm going to turn it over to Margaret to talk a little bit about the MSBA process and the funding.
Thank you, Kristen. Let me just explain a little bit about my role. So all the folks that you've heard from over here are part of the design team, so architects, landscape architects, they have engineers, the whole gamut. My name is Margaret Wood, and I am what's called an owner's project manager. So when communities in Massachusetts undertake public construction projects that use public money, more than the 1.5 million of public money, they're required to have someone who has this particular kind of background. So my role is to manage the schedule and the money and to act as an extension of the community, which is why I'm called project manager. So that's why I get to talk about the less decorative parts of the project, which are very important here, which is why. So the first thing I want to say is I want to just say a little bit about where the money's coming from on the state side. So some of you have probably heard that there have been, there are quite a few projects in the Pioneer Valley that are recently constructed or in the works. So in the olden days, so I'm going to say before the year 2000, there was what's called a school building authority that funded school building projects. There was a certain mechanism that turned out to not work particularly well. So that program was shut down, and a new organization was created, which is the Massachusetts School Building Authority, so the MSBA, which you've heard a couple times. The funding mechanism for the MSBA is that a penny of our sales tax, so every time you spend a dollar and you, you know, 6.25% of that is the sales tax, a penny of that is going in a pot statewide that is money that is available for school construction. So it can be renovations, it can be new construction, it can be windows and boilers, like some of the projects that Holyoke is doing already, and it's available on a competitive application basis. So basically, communities go to the MSBA and they say, "We have a need, we have a big need, and so we are going to present our project to you, and you're going to let us know if you'll fund it." So over, so a bunch of projects, if you could see this beautiful presentation that Jones with us have put together, a bunch of projects in the valley that are underway, either completed or underway, are Granby, East Hampton, I think you may have heard, is building an elementary and middle school, South Cadley, the Plains Elementary School, the Ludlot Chapin Elementary School, an elementary school in Springfield, which is just getting started, West Springfield High, Chicopee Academy. Those projects, I believe, were all funded with MSBA dollars. So that is basically money that folks have paid into the sales tax pot and is coming back to the community. So obviously, if you're paying sales tax, you want to get your community to share that. So when Dory mentioned earlier that we had made this application and the MSBA accepted it to do two buildings, it is quite unusual. I mean, usually, their job, they feel, is to kind of make sure that the money gets spread out across the state. So it's quite unusual to have them accept two buildings. It is recognition of the fact that they see a very significant need here for middle school space, going back to what Dr. Wright said earlier. So as part of the process of developing the design, and there are some great statistics online when you get the thing about the MSBA and the amount of money, 13.6 billion that they've paid out to schools since 2004 when they reopened jobs and student benefits. But, you know, bringing it home to Holyoke, the designs that have been developed, which are actually in line and on the lowest end of what these costs are costing statewide on a per square foot basis, the two projects together are about $132 million, and that is both hard costs and soft costs. So there's construction costs, and then there's soft costs. And the Peck project is about $72 million of that, and the Chestnut Street project is about 60. And the difference between the two is really that at Peck, we have a demolition project that we need to undertake, as well as a lot more site work because the site is... I am happy to get into the details of where these costs are coming from, but they are laid out. We have to make a submittal to the MSBA on the 20th, and there is a public Google Drive where you can see all the documents that were submitted, as well as very detailed budgets. We have to, in order to arrive at these numbers, we actually had two complete estimates by two separate entities, and we reconciled those numbers to come up with the final numbers that are in this. If, what's important about it on the MSBA side is they're looking for a number that could be the basis of a funding agreement with the city. So at the moment, that's the number that stands. If the city decides to move ahead and embrace the idea of moving out of these schools, that has established the threshold on which the funding agreement will be based. So the other thing I want to talk about is we have explored with the mayor and with the city's finance advisor what that would look like if it was a bond, which is a fairly typical way of funding these projects. And for, this would be, the numbers that were around were based on a 30-year bond. They would increase the residential tax rate by $1.31 per thousand and the commercial rate by $2.73. So the finance advisor who gives me these data said that the value of, I mean, everybody can do their own math, but just as a marker, I always ask, well, what's the average home value in Holyoke? And their analysis said it was about $182,000 is the average value, tax value. So for that average home, imaginary average home, the annual cost per year would be $240. At the end of the 30 years, that debt is retired, it goes away, it just comes off of the tax rolls entirely. And that is why it's called a debt exclusion. So it's sort of saying that we, as voters, are identifying this project and saying, this is sort of outside of our regular taxes, we're willing to pay more or not for a distinct period of time. So don't stay on the books forever. I think my other piece of this was to talk about the schedule. So... So the reason we're here tonight is when you are seeking, oh, I wanted to talk about the MSBA share. So of the $132 million, the MSBA is prepared to fund about 60% of that. So the actual cost to the city, which is obviously a really important number, is around $55 million. And so when we're looking at that calculation of the debt, it's not based on the 132, it's based on the $55 million. Does anybody have any questions about that? Because this is a lot of, it's hard to follow this without the numbers that kind of do.
And I know, obviously, the state isn't funding as much of these schools as they have in the past, but how are these other projects doing as far as percentage funding from the state? They're at 60, there's some much bigger numbers.
Yeah, it's actually pretty interesting. I did a pretty detailed analysis, I'm happy to share with folks. On average, the way the MSBA establishes its reimbursement is essentially, I'm going to call it a poverty rate or a need basis. So not every community gets the same amount. So communities that have very high needs, like Holyoke, have a fairly high base rate, and Holyoke gets 80%, is what's called the base rate. And, I don't know, does anybody know what East Hampton was? It was more like, I think, 25? Yeah, so East Hampton would be 55 as the base rate. Then they also have caps on certain costs. So in this case, the big impact is there's a cap on construction costs on a square-foot basis. And it's deliberately kept below the actual cost because, you know, construction costs could go down, they don't want to be reimbursing more than it's costing. Right now, the cap is $333 a square foot. So the difference between that cap and the actual cost, which in the case of Chestnut is about $480 or $485 a square foot, and PEC is $515, that difference gets funded by the community. So that means that although the base reimbursement rate on paper is 80%, what I call the effective reimbursement rate is, in this case, will be around 60%. Typically, communities, we see communities getting 15% to 20% less. So it's, and that, it's completely about this cap on construction costs. Is that like a way too complicated?
No, no, that does, it does explain a lot. Because I was kind of curious how we're comparing to other communities, even though their jobs are more expensive, $120 million, I think, this one.
Yeah. No, I mean, honestly, we're doing pretty well, and it's because I was sharing with someone earlier today that's a great chart. You Google "MSBA school construction costs," it'll take you to a chart, which is a tableau chart, and that chart, actually, if you look on the bottom half of it, has all of the current construction projects as live data. And if you scroll all the way across to the most recent projects, which are, two of them are ours, the projects with the lowest construction cost in the MSBA pipeline right now, on a square-foot basis, are PEC and the Chestnut Street project.
Margaret, before you go on, there's going to be time for public discussion afterwards and after the presentation, then everyone will have to save a lot of time.
Okay. So I just want to say a couple minutes, a couple things about the schedule, which is very big picture. We've made the submission to the MSBA, they consider it, they will take a vote in April on whether or not they are agreeing with the funding proposal that we've made. That will enable the city to execute a funding agreement with the city. The city has about 120 days from the April date to take their own, take their own vote, if they choose, like if you choose to have the debt exclusion vote, has been proposed, or find some other mechanism for funding it. Now, we've looked at the, at a high level at what the other options are for funding it, and I do think, it does seem like the debt exclusion is a good way to do this, but I think that is, you know, for public discussion at this point. The reason that the timeline is important is that all of our estimates are based on a certain assumption about the speed at which this project goes. So we're assuming once this vote is taken, there will be about a year of design and bidding, and then there will be about a year and a half, let's call it 18, 16 to 18 months of construction. The PEC project is a longer. Our goal is to get the buildings built so that they are open in the summer of 2022 and are, you know, basically are opened up for use in the fall, in September of 2022. So, you know, there's obviously time in here for public discussion, and we need the public support. But if the city decides they want to take longer, we would have to go back to the MSBA and say, you know, the city wants to take longer to make this decision. So, is there anything else I didn't find there?
I think the only thing I was thinking of, you might mention the contingencies within those numbers.
Yeah, so, you know, I think most communities have a quite important concern about whether that number's going to go up. And we worked hard, myself, sort of leading the team, but with the entire group, including the estimators, to embed contingencies within the project. So we have, there are several contingencies that add up to, depending on which project you're looking at, about $9 million on each of them, and that is escalation contingency, design contingency, and contingencies for the unexpected that happen during construction. So I feel as though the city's very well protected against the overall cost of this construction going up for any reason, and, which is why I feel safe in my role in sort of recommending the total project budget to you as something that is, really, has been really thoughtfully developed.
So Dennis, now I think we can, questions as people have them, whoever's the appropriate answer.
It sounds good. I'm going to hear from Devin Shuen as part of the, as the building chair also, will take questions from the committee, then we'll go into public discussion right after that.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out. I think one of the things that's important, we've heard a great presentation, you'll see it soon, but it really is, is the why, and why this is for Holyoke. And we look at communities that are getting buildings, we look at why we're doing this, and there are some severe equity issues. When I, when we all go online, we see things, the teachers trying to do GoFundMes just so they can fund something for robotics class. When someone's looking just to piece together musical instruments and to find a room where their students can perform, that's one of the reasons why we're doing this. We're doing it because this building here that was built in the 80s is the newest building in the city of Holyoke. That's why we're building it and trying to have an equitable program for all of our students, K through 12. We can transform the lives of some of our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders through new buildings in the city of Holyoke. We can really take it home and provide for all students. So it won't matter if a student is a student in Long Meadow or East Hampton or Amherst or Springfield or Chicopee, but so they can get the best quality education and some of the best facilities that we can have in Western Mass. That's why we're doing this. We heard about the financing, we heard about what the bill will be, but that is a small price for the ability to provide a high-quality education for the 5,500 students here in the city of Holyoke. And I guarantee, when we have new buildings, when we can expand our dual-language program that is thriving at Medcap and Ian White, that people will be knocking on the doors of the city of Holyoke to be students here. It can also help our economy and the community around us. I mean, this will create so many construction jobs for the people in the area. We know we have people here that are just waiting and ready to see this, this new building environment. I mean, it will be really probably one of the largest-scale first programs to have this new type of building materials being used here in the city of Holyoke. So we owe it to our students here and to our community for the next 20 years to really make sure that we are setting ourselves up for the future and we're setting ourselves up for an equitable education for every student here. So I would hope that you continue to come out to these meetings, that you would talk to your city councilors, that you would talk to your mayor, you'd talk to your school community members, and more importantly, talk to your neighbor. When you're at the coffee shop or grabbing breakfast, tell the person, "This is right for the city of Holyoke because it's right for the future." It will only create a more, better educated workforce and a better educated community if we have this. So sorry to take your time off, but I think it's really important that we really come together and just talk to everyone and say why this is the thing to do for Holyoke. Thank you.
Good job, Devin.
Any questions for anyone else? No questions?
So my only question, I know that this is a bond that is going to take 30 years to pay back, and it's like you buy a house, you take it for 30, 15. Has there ever been a bond that you can extend to longer periods and you really do not put the burden on the taxpayers and our commercial rates that will be affected by this? This is a question that I'm just curious about, not a real question, I don't know.
Yeah, you know, unfortunately, the mayor has to leave because he has an emergency deal. And I'm not a financial advisor, I will say. I do think that the city council had a really great presentation from the finance advisor in November, which we can send around with the...
Can you see that, please?
Oh, sure, yeah. I'm sorry. In November, the finance committee of the city council had a really great presentation from the city's finance advisor, and it's, we can send the link around when we send the presentation. And they had, you know, pretty robust back and forth about what the options were for financing it. It was the finance advisor's opinion, which I can only relay here, that the debt exclusion was the most beneficial to the city, and that it was, but I, since I'm not a finance advisor, I'm not sure that I'm the right person to paraphrase the reasons that she gave. I definitely think people should watch it because they asked, the folks on the finance committee asked a whole series of questions about how to think about this and how to think about it within the larger picture of the city's finances, and I think she did a really great job of answering those questions.
The others? Not going to public discussion?
All right. I have a quick question. What's the latest on the acquisition of the Chestnut site?
So the latest on the acquisition of Chestnut site, so those of you who were here in 1999 might remember that church that burned down on that site and sort of took the rest of the block with it. I would say about three weeks ago, the housing authority made a deal with the Archdiocese to acquire the Archdiocese. Currently, I think there are five, five blocks, five pieces of land within that block, three of which, two of which are in tax title, which there must be six, two in tax title, two belong to the Arch, to the Housing Authority, and two belong to the Archdiocese. So the Housing Authority has made a deal to acquire those, and the city has then executed an agreement with Housing Authority, but the Housing Authority will not look forward to the development on that site until the outcome of this decision about the school is made. But it is now possible for the city to acquire from the Housing Authority the whole block if the city decided to look forward.
I just have a question, Mark, and Dr. Schreick may be able to answer this better than you, and I don't know, but there must be data out there that points to the fact of communities that build new schools, they're seeing higher graduation rates, they're seeing all those numbers that, you know, I've heard that, you know, we've heard people say that, but is there any hard evidence that alludes to the fact that, you know, the pregnancy rate for teenagers go down, the dropout rate goes down, the SAT scores go up, the graduation rates go up, all those type of numbers that, you know, people that are property owners and taxpayers, they, those, that's what they want to know.
Yes.
Are we going to see, you know, it's great to have everyone say, "There's going to be change, economic development, jobs are going to be created." That's all certainly well and good, but at the end of the day, are the youth of our children, actually, are we going to see a different change? And I think if those numbers were available to the public, that would be helpful.
You know, I will definitely ask, the thing that I know is very well documented at this point, and it hasn't been a very long period of time since this construction boom that was enabled by the sales tax, using the sales tax, but what has happened very widely is that communities build schools and people come back to the public schools. So that is, you know, unquestionably a trend that has been seen across the state from one end to the other. Actually, one of the first cities in the Commonwealth that did this was back before the MSBA was the city of Chelsea, who built an entirely new school system and have really had to do, you know, expand, we've worked on a few projects with them subsequently. They actually added an additional, they probably added almost an additional 800 students to their school system because the district as a whole has become so attractive. And I think, I'm someone, I live in Boston myself, and, you know, we have challenges with our middle schools as well, it's where we lose the most kids, and I think that's what I've seen also reflected in Holyoke, is that you have, you're losing kids in middle school years, and part of it, I think, is because of the facility. So I'm happy to ask the MSBA for that kind of data. I'm honestly not sure because the duration, you have to remember this organization was only formed in 2004, so the duration for that data is not very long, really, I mean, what, years? I'm happy to ask them for other specific data.
Yeah, I would just, the other thing about that is a health impact, we have very high asthma rate, more than a majority of the state, and I do think a lot of our illness issues and, you know, medical leads that kids, some of our kids are connected to poor air quality in a number of our facilities. So I do think there's been studies on that. We also have very high chronic absentee rates. And, you know, it's not all about the facility, but I do think that that contributes to it. It's hard to make a direct correlation between the food outcomes in buildings, because I do think, obviously, what happens in the middle buildings are, I don't want to diminish how important the teachers are, but I also think, as I said before, I think, you know, we lose a lot of kids to charter choice, which there are, there's a lot of examples of kids coming back to school systems when facilities look apart. And I think the only facilities that I think hold up right now are our high school facilities. All our elementary and middle school facilities right now are inferior to local, a lot of local communities and charters, for sure. And then I think, the other thing I said before, we're running way too many buildings. We're running buildings that are way too small for, you know, it'd be nice to have small schools, but we're, it's an operation, it has a huge impact on our operational costs that we're running as many small facilities as we are with, you know, 200, 300 kids that ultimately doesn't have the quality of experience.
I just want to speak to this a little bit as well, because what, you know, once you start working with the district and look into the issues that are present in that district, we were aware of the dropout rate, the problem with retention, the high FMTism, we started to look into it and looked at the asthma rates in the community, and there are studies that show the correlation in asthma that relates not only to air quality and environment, but also the living conditions in urban areas in general, the lack of greenery in those communities, the lack of access to the outdoors, and then unhealthy building environments both where people are living and at school. So what we've become aware of in this process is that you also have a fairly high percentage of students who are coming to school already, sort of lacking some of the basic things that will allow them to learn, be ready to learn, physically and emotionally and in another way. So a lot of the design decisions we're making have been about trying to provide the best environment possible. And in doing that, we've looked at some research that talks about the quality of natural lighting, ventilation, daylighting, materials, wood as a material in an environment, and how they can help be beneficial to learning outcomes. And that each of those different things has been studied individually and shows, you know, a couple percentage points of impact. It's impossible to say a new school in and of itself, because schools are designed so differently, but collectively, all those little design decisions matter. Another thing that's really important in this district is that, becoming aware of this, we've provided two very unique spaces that the district is on. this, we've provided two very unique spaces that the district is opting to add. One is a parent center where parents will be able to find resources. So, the school needs to be welcoming to parents and then helping them to get access to things that can help provide a stability that will help their families as a whole. So, we've made that kind of a very critical space in the first floor of both buildings. We've also provided a larger medical suite because what we learned in looking at this issue of attrition, students leaving the district or not coming to school regularly, is that often it's because there are medical issues that are not being addressed. So, providing a way that students can get access to some of the help needs they have will help them also to be successful. So, those are things that were not considered in the district thirty years ago that are now really critical. And this isn't the only city that's doing this, or wants to do this, I should say. Other communities are also doing it. So, they're starting to become a case history of schools that are providing this richer, you know, volume of services to students, and that is affecting outcomes, but it takes time.
Ms. LaGrom, Martine?
I probably have this question directly to Dr. Strike. So, building this school, having to have, is it still going to be like a, I'm sorry, a zone school, the middle school, or are we going to be busing some students more than ever as we're trying and you're saying there's a cost saving or they're spending already four and a half million dollars in other schools for the upkeep?
Yes.
Are we going to save at the start, meaning transporting wise, in seeing that it's a community?
I don't think, we think there'll be some transportation savings, but we don't think substantial amounts because we will be transporting more kids to, you know, two schools. I mean, while they may be broken down by neighborhoods, we clearly right now have more middle schools that are closer to where kids live. But at the same time, the two schools are positioned to be very close to where the majority of our students, there was a map that I couldn't see tonight, it's in your packet, that shows where the kids live, and the two middle schools proposed are positioned well to be close. So, while we think there'll be some savings, and we haven't done all that analysis on transportation yet, I don't think it'll be substantial. It's more about how many buildings we're running, you know, custodial staff, heating, cooling, and as many buildings as we run now, obviously, that will be lessened by having fewer buildings that were operated. We'd also be able to move the central office. I mean, I know there's, the central office has been in some discussion at the city council over the years, and we do still pay rent for our, even though it's much less than it was, it would allow us to move the central office into one of the vacated schools as well.
I just want to publicly say, I favor this opportunity in our city, understanding that it's been over thirty years that we have had a building, and I've also been part of, you know, part of the redesign team from the beginning of this conversation and visiting many other schools, and I've been there anyways regardless if I was a part of the redesign team and I've seen the distress in some of the schools. I do believe that having the opportunity of having one of the new schools can bring the, can offer it as you get better lighting, lighting in schools, children get more motivated, new facilities, and we're losing, we know that, we've known this since I was at the board ten years ago, that we're losing students at school choice to other places that are more advanced, with schools that are set up to provide the twenty-first century technical preparation that they may have and that we don't have. So, I just want to just say that, but at the same time, I want to be, you know, upfront about the concerns that have been brought to my attention, that it is our commercial, you know, we need to figure out where, you know, we can put no more burden on our residents, our business community. I'm also with the questions that have been brought to my emails and phone calls, it's been more about jobs, you know. We continue to use these terms that we're going to create jobs every time a project comes in our city, and I want to know, and I want to really get this, to see the reality of what are the numbers that are really going to be from Holyoke per se when creating jobs. I know Jason's here from the union, and I like to make sure that that is the cost that it's bringing. As we speak about this, you know, we had it with the most recent marijuana, you know, developers here, and I looked up numbers, and I'll tell you, the numbers does not reflect what was said. And I think that it's only fair, you know, to say that we're going to do something and then it's not there. But I do favor this project. It is, it's a tough, you know, it's one of those tough love decisions, I say, because the business is telling you, you know, how much more can we take, and those who are limited income here are really the struggling individuals who own homes, and those are the ones that we get the calls from. Those who could afford the taxes can, and those who can't, it makes, you know, it gets tough on them, but it is, it's one of those decisions that we really have to make for the best interest for our children in this city.
Mr. Andersonberg?
I understand, you know, I don't want to pay taxes, you know, I don't want to pay more taxes and more taxes, but what I will tell you is this, is that in my family, we've been known to make sacrifices, and the community is like a family, right? So, we need to look at it that way and make the sacrifice for the future of our children. Nobody wants to pay taxes, but you have to pay for the future. You have to look at it that way because if not, we're not going to get past these walls we keep getting, you know, pushed up against of wanting to pay more taxes. But you have to believe in the city, you have to believe in investment, you have to believe and have a care for the future of these children. My granddaughter will be in these schools, and so will your children's children. We have to invest, we have to believe.
All right. We're going to public discussion. Five people have signed up to speak, first being Scott Goulin.
I'll stand at the mic even though I'm... My first question was after I answered while you were here about the percentage of the rate being reimbursed by the state. My other questions and comments to that are, you know, I also, I'm a lifelong investment employee, my kids have gone through their schools, and I'm going to have grandkids, I think, going through the schools. The thing is, though, is there are two things that are inevitable, right? Death and taxes. And we are going to pay taxes regardless. Now, if we cast up this opportunity now, and it sounds like it's very thought out, and it seems like the square foot cost is actually very low, if we don't take this opportunity now and we get bumped back down to the bottom of the list, and in three years or five years, because we are going to have to build these schools eventually, what are we going to be reimbursed next time? Because the state historically hasn't been real forgiving. I know Bramby had a problem, they folded down the tax increase, had to go back to drawing board again, and ended up spending a lot of money for a lot less. I hate to see that as a taxpayer happened to us. And the other part of it is, although I'm a union carpenter, I've been fortunate enough to work thirty years, and I've now gone out to another base, I'm now teaching at Plutton. And Plutton is a new school in Springfield, and their school is actually their top performer in the city and a high performer in the state. I don't think it's all because of the building, but when you have a fresh start, new ideas, it seems to work for them and it'll work for us.
Thank you.
I'll mention the question of the first MSBA.
Oh, yeah? Next person on the list is Jason Durant.
Yep.
Sir?
All right, Jason Durant, 150 Mountain View. Three points. One, putting the hat of the carpenters' union and representing the carpenters that you see here tonight, over a thousand carpenters in Western Massachusetts, opportunities for job creation are critical, and these are, these schools are a great place for us to share our talents. I wanted to point out, I wasn't thinking about this until the council brought it up, but I think it's so important, that we talk about job opportunities. Other communities are passing ordinances, legislation that says that minorities, women, and veterans will be part of the projects, residents will be part of the projects. And if this committee can ad language to say, we will, we want to build this, but we want to build it with a community that is right here, this project becomes much more impactful than watching contractors that come in, like the marijuana, where there was a company called Champagne, this company has historic wage debt, and they built that marijuana facility in the city. We didn't gain anything from that. The community actually takes a hit. Putting on the hat of a taxpayer, I'm willing, my kids are out of school, I am not going to benefit from this, my one son is in West Springfield, I have a lot of family that has either left or their children are going to other places. So, I'm glad that there was some honesty about the fact that there is a migration outwards, and I think it's because of the uncertainty of the school system, we need a migration inwards because we're paying for every one of those students. Let not forget the fact that every student that is in Holyoke that goes someplace else comes out of our budget, right? So, we're already paying those costs, and I'd rather have an influx of students coming in because they see some of the best programs and best facilities out there. The third comment to make is...
That's your two minutes.
I'll yield the time of the next speaker.
I'm prepared, so we're giving everybody two minutes.
Okay, the third comment is, this is credible to you guys.
That's your two minutes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for speaking.
This is a good one, you're going to want to hear this.
I could give him my...
One more minute. Okay, one more minute, I'll be there. I represent the carpenters' union and the construction that's out there. You're talking to a professional that has been in this industry for thirty years, and I can tell you that the prices that you've got right now are some of the most competitive. Why? Because we finished a billion dollars worth of work last year. Our contractors are hungry. Market's coming back up, though. There's six hundred million dollars worth of work coming, and when that work hits, the prices that you're going to get two or three years down the road will not be as attractive for what you're getting right now. So, I'm going to say that with an eighty percent plus the fact that you're getting prices that are, I think, some of the best in the industry, you want to make this decision now. Fontaine's one of that contractor, you already locked them in, they've already given you a number, right?
All right, next person to speak, Arnaldo Lopez.
I want to say, I think I want a new school, the two middle school, they call, it's more important for the kid, you know, it's going to be more, creating more jobs for the community. And that's all I have to say, I need a school.
And you're a union carpenter and you want a job, too?
Yeah. I need a job, I need a job right now, and I need a job. Thank you.
Next person, Nathaniel Durant.
How you doing? I'm Nate Durant.
Nathaniel?
I'm the son, he'd like to mention. My parents, all my aunts and uncles grew up in Holyoke, a ton of cousins over here. They talk me about the school system, how it needs to be improved, and things that can help improve it. Looking at that plan for those two schools and the ideas that you guys are building, that's going to be great for our education. And it's not going to just impact us in Holyoke. The meaningful communities will see that, and people will want to copy, they'll want to be just like that. Those are some innovative ideas. I'm looking around, I'm one of the younger people in the room, I just got out of school a few years ago, and I didn't have any of this stuff in school. If I could go back and have that stuff in school, I might not be a carpenter today. I'm being honest, because my imagination would be different.
You'd be a better one, just kidding.
But this will be an excellent thing for all of us in this community, and I'd love to be able to get back to the community and help those.
Thank you very much. All right, I'm having a hard time with his last name, it's Chris Betts?
Yeah, my name is...
Yes, sir?
I grew up in Holyoke, and Holyoke High School was built in 1963. This school I worked on was built in 1987. So, you can see how old these schools are, these schools are real bad, you know? Same thing with Pec, I think it was built in the seventies, you know, it used a lot of work, and you're better off to share it now, get something new for our kids. You know, if you go to these schools and you see what it looks like inside, how would you like the whole of the school there, you know? So, I'm in favor of these two schools. Thanks.
Thank you. And next on the list, Elizabeth Rezeyariz.
So, a lot of people who've been talking so far have been talking as people who've lived in Holyoke their whole lives, who have a lot of roots here. Now, I'm a new resident of Holyoke. My family and I, we bought our house about a year and a half ago, and we made our commitment to the community, and we're really happy to be here. But whenever we talked about being a young family moving to Holyoke, the first thing everybody we knew in the valley said was, why are you moving to Holyoke if you're thinking about having kids? You know, everybody, everybody knows that the Holyoke school system is awful. And I want to remind everybody that when we're losing kids from Holyoke, we're also losing parents, we're losing good workers, we're losing shoppers, we're losing customers, you know, those business people that who are worried about paying their taxes, well, they might have a lot more customers if Holyoke as a community were more welcoming to young families. That's the first thing that people think about when they think about moving to a place or staying in a place where they grew up in, is can my children have a good future here? And, you know, and we looked around and, you know, and to be honest, it was the property prices that brought us here, but the reason they're so low right now is that, you know, people don't want to buy. And, you know, if the school system is good, if it's a place that people can be hopeful in, then those property prices will go up, the, you know, businesses will flourish. It's part of building a community that has a future, it's that foundation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Stephanie Garcia.
So, I'm here to speak as a parent of twins that attend a Holyoke other schools. And even before I was a parent, I was a community member that was advocating for middle schools, and my husband actually ran into office because we knew the middle schools in the system are not servicing our kids, are, we're losing a lot of kids in that age, in that stage, we're not giving them what they need. They're in buildings with pre-katers and first graders, and they're not being, they're not being challenged, they're not being nurtured, and we're losing a lot of middle schoolers in this place. So, as my own personal battle was to make sure we have middle schools in the district, my husband ran for the city, comes on school committee to make that a priority. Unfortunately, there's a lot of priorities in the city, so that got put down, it passed down. Now, my twins are one, they're in first grade, and I have Ethan running around like, oh, you guys saw him. And he wanted to talk to you about his current building. I'm like, Ethan, what do you think your school needs right now? And he's a first grader out of my class. He's like, well, we need a cafeteria. He's like, and I didn't think about what he was saying, but in his eyes, where they go to have lunch right now is not a cafeteria, it's a basement. He's like, and I didn't think about what he was saying, but in his eyes, where they go to have lunch right now, it's a cafeteria, it's a basement. So I'm really hoping you guys somehow find ways to make this happen, but our city needs this, our kids need this. And our city needs this because at the same time, it would be a domino effect that will maintain students here because I know if my kids, by the time they get to middle school, and I will tell you this, guys, to your face, if there's no middle schools in here, my kids will be somewhere else. And we have our home here, my parents own some home here. We're not very good at money, we're tight too, but we will make it happen because this is what our kids need. Thank you.
All right, last on the list for tonight, Ryan Ramoff.
Uh, I'm gonna stay here because I think I've talked pretty loud and everybody else went to the mic that doesn't work. Uh, thanks very much, I don't know if we save the best for last or anything like that, but uh, I guess something Dr. Reich said earlier kinda spurred a question, you know, let me just kinda give you an idea. I've been a Holyoke resident for a long time. I have middle school aged children right now and it's not working. And my son is the top of his class and he just got his MCAS today and he's just above the state average for meeting. That's just above the state average for meeting, he's number one in his class. A star student in, in Holyoke. So it's not working, so I'll pay the seventy-two hundred dollars over the next thirty years, that's fine with me. Um, but something you said earlier, Dr. Reich, was thirty years ago, we made a decision and built a school, Peck, which, if I quote you, never should have been built. So how do we know, and maybe you can answer this, how do we know the decision we're making today with a neighborhood?
There you go.
With the neighborhood format that you talked about. How do we know that that neighborhood format is the right thing to do right now? That in thirty years is still gonna be for your children's children, the right move? Because that's a pretty big decision, a hundred and thirty-two million dollars, two schools, which maybe the neighborhood piece isn't gonna work out right. So how do we know that's right? I think that'll help some of the folks here who don't necessarily have children or who may have children in Holyoke in the future. Help them to keep their mind at ease, so I don't know, maybe you could speak to that, Dr. Reich.
Uh, that's a great question. I guess the microphone works, but I'll just talk. It's a, it's a great question, but I, I think, first of all, Peck, I think they knew it was a mistake right, right after it opened. Um, but I, we, as we built the high school model, which is around pathways and connections to career and higher ed, we have been thinking about what schools, we, we needed a whole revisiting process about what schools need to look like for the next thirty or forty years. Um, and that was the plan around our high school design. As we talk about the design of the middle school, it's with the intent of preparing our kids for what a high school experience would be, which is about preparing kids for both college and career. So a lot of the decisions that we made in designing this, yeah, I can't look at it, first of all, I know education's gonna look like, but it's been like not thinking about what schools need to look like in two thousand twenty or twenty-two, when the buildings presume will come alive. It's about thinking about two thousand fifty, two thousand sixty, what we think schools should be. And they need to be much more nimble, flexible spaces because we need to be prepared to, to, to adjust accordingly depending on how the trends in education move. And so, so much, and Dory can tell you, is the argument, so when they, we've talked about this, make these buildings furniture as flexible as possible. Make the rooms as flexible as possible because what they could be, what they're gonna be used for in two thousand twenty-two may not be what they're used for in two thousand thirty, two thousand forty. So that's our best thinking right now, but you're absolutely right, um, that we need to be thinking with that because this is an investment for the city that cannot last. We can't be coming back to say we wanna build new buildings fifteen years from now. Uh, this has gotta be a fifty-year investment and just remember, most of our buildings are now at year sixty, year seventy. You know, they, they've, they've served its purpose, it's time to move on.
I just wanna add something, um, so, um, I wanted to say, it is, it is a great question and I think Steve sort of nailed the sort of larger issue about how people think about design is different. But I will also say that Holyoke was uniquely gifted with Peck in the same way Gardner was uniquely gifted with a hexagonal high school. And there are a couple of these buildings up in the state. The only two I know about that were built in a format which is neither flexible nor expandable. So, um, there are a lot of other buildings out there, including many of the buildings at Holyoke, which are capable of being renovated and made more flexible. It's just that the form of Peck, this notion of making a, this sort of double hexagon in a building um, is, was a bad idea at the time and nobody's repeating it. So, you know, I, I, I know that's not hugely reassuring because I think people do look at buildings and go, well, why did they do that? I just wanna say that Peck is like kind of out there on the spectrum of bad ideas. Um, and I think what Steve, what Dr. Reich described about how designers look at the buildings today in terms of making them more flexible so that they can evolve with the education is really the nugget of what was wrong with the hexagonal building then and what won't be repeated then.
I, I would also add that I don't know how that came about exactly, but I do feel very good about the process that we're doing in that we're vetting our work as publicly as possible. And when I go through Peck, I think, who'd let that happen? I can see the concept on his napkin and it made sense, but I would think that there wasn't enough scrutiny publicly and we've tried really hard to be open to scrutiny. And having parents, you know, really pushing us, teachers really pushing us, I think, will elicit a design that will last because it's been questioned and, and that's kind of the process that we go through now. I don't know that the process was as scrutinized in nineteen seventy-three. I think that was kind of a particularly bad era in structural engineering and maybe, you know, carpenters could say whether that's true, but, um, but we, we've looked at the hazmat materials in that building. It was a heap of phthalates and vinyls and PCDs and all sorts of bad things, right? Um, so there's a lot that's changed in terms of material expectations of school buildings and I think the process through which they're being designed is with greater attention. Uh, and the MSBA itself puts us through the wringer as a process that is very careful too and that process wasn't there before. And Margot's been working on school design for a long time, so she's probably seen, you know, the good and the bad along the way and probably sees that as well.
Ms. Williams?
Hello, everyone, my name is Rosalie Tensley-Williams. Um, I came to Holyoke when my baby was five and my oldest son was seven. They grew up in Holyoke, they started out at Sullivan's School, they ended up graduating from this school. So my baby now is forty-eight and my oldest son is fifty, so we kinda need to get some of the twenty-first century things going on here. We've heard that we gotta strike water, iron pot and money talks and everything else walks. Now, I am a veteran, I was stationed in Westover twice, Holyoke is my city. And my motto is, I have these bodies made up three years ago, if you mess with kids, you mess with me. So that's my motto, so anything that I can do to enhance it, I would love to do it because we really need to get into the twenty-first century. Both my sons had an excellent education and started out at Sullivan's and graduated from the school. However, times have changed since they went to school and so for our grandkids and great grandchildren, we do need to move into the twenty-first century. I'm Ward, this is my boy, Sullivan's, this is my school and also Ward. But I love all the kids, so they all belong to me. So let's do what we can to get this project moving. Let's, let's hit it, okay? Let's hit the ground running and get it done, okay? Thank you and God bless you all.
I gotta let Dory show everybody. Well, I'm just gonna show a few that, that I think you really haven't seen. So, um, this is the exterior rendering of St. Chestnut School. So as Christian explained on his hand, this is an LK school, facing library square. This little building here is Ward's, so right across the street from Ward's. Um, and we designed schools, we didn't talk about a lot, but I wanna mention safety and security and how that's really changed obviously since nineteen seventy-three. Um, schools today are built with a very different attitude about access into the school, um, security of the glazing on the outside of the school. Um, and, and it's a very tricky balance, but trying to be sure the school is, looks welcoming and inviting, but is also actually state of the art in terms of how it protects students because that's become very critical. So we have this very specifically welcoming entrance at the main entrance and after, you know, school starts, that's where everybody's coming to school. Uh, but in the morning, we've really tried to create a really student oriented zone on the outside that Rachel was talking about. And we've also tried to really control the boundary of the property in a way that makes it useful because these schools are not just for the students, they're part of the community. Uh, so this is currently a vacant lot, I encourage you to drive by and, you know, appreciate the dirt. Um, it's not doing much for the community, but when it's activated as a school, not only is it serving the students, but it also has benefits to everybody who lives around the school. So that's a very urban site, we've tried to break up the building so it doesn't feel too massive by kind of changing materials as you go around. And we're using brick because it feels good, but also because right now it's a very affordable building material again. It kind of wasn't for a while, it's come back. Uh, so it's a really great material to be working with and it's part of how we've kept the cost, we've been doing on this project. Um, and we've also built a very efficient building and, and, you know, to some degree, building up and very, building simply makes it environmentally efficient as well. Um, then to, these are some of the inspirational images that Rachel was speaking to and she was talking about trying to embed learning in the environment, both on the inside and outside of the school. On the inside, we, we worked on flexibility, but on the outside, we've really tried to program it to be educational and interesting. And also low maintenance, we, we're having the director facilities involved in the design process and we spent a lot of time talking about what materials are and how we're gonna do it. Um, so this is a roof plan at Chestnut, um, and it's showing that area where we're trying to really, we had originally programming around the building, but we actually pulled it all up here because they're middle school students and everybody wants to see and know where they are. We don't want students wandering around outside, um, so we've kinda changed it that way. So this is that first floor plan that has all those public spaces. So right now or in the past, schools weren't expected to be used year round. But now we expect a school to serve as a year round educational space because there are gonna be students taking classes in the summer, but also there's potential for adults to be taking classes in the summer. So the school will be air conditioned and it will be more useful to the whole community for other purposes, other than just teaching. So we have the cafeteria as a connected stage cafeteria with a band attached to it. We have a gym, we have seven chambers so that that and this whole thing can be secured and separated off from the rest of the building. Um, and we have that design center and media center and the parent center and the health center, all come right here so that there are some families when families come in, uh, to make families feel more welcome. This is the exterior rendering for the Peck school. If they look different, it's pretty similar, we just flipped it, mirrored it. Um, so this is that stair tower that we showed the other ones from the very front, uh, but we've changed it, put the entrance into the middle of the school because of the site, because there's a school where it's close to the building and it's less urban, uh, but the same materials on the outside seem to, because of the way step, uh, Peck steps down, we pulled the gym away and separated it in, in order to make use of that higher site so that we had lower site cost than we might have. Um, this is the existing Peck footprint, uh, so if you know the school, you kinda know, you kinda come right here as Rachel was saying, you're right there on the site, uh, and this is just up here, this is the path, um, to the high school. And what we always noticed when we were there is that nobody's ever on the field, there's no real connection to the playing field. So what we aim to do is to pull back the school, so this is the footprint of the existing school and now we've pulled it away so that we can actually use this to make it a much more welcoming and useful and active space so that students will wanna be outside sometimes. We've focused a lot on trying to make nature present in and outside the school, natural light present in and outside the school, fresh air in and outside the school. So this is, this is kind of part of that intent is, um, we've talked about stormwater, this is the stormwater retention area that we're trying to program and make it useful to the city. Um, and we have some of the same amenities that we talked about in a slightly different orientation here because there's more outdoor space. And we wanna improve the backlit school and open up some dingle and be sure there's lighting and pads back there so it's not as mysterious as it is. So even though it looks different, this is pretty much the same plan, it's just that we pulled that gym off and put it at the second floor level. Um, but otherwise, it's very similar, cafeteria, band, uh, parent center, admin, media center. And then as we talked about before, these six communities, each raised broken up into seven communities that has its own sort of identity, um, and it has in it a project area, it has support spaces. Um, it's supported also by spaces here as a connecting, that kind of operates as a line that connects the whole. So, uh, I don't wanna keep you guys, I know it took you a long time, but, uh, just thought it might be helpful to do this.
I wanna thank Jones with the architect, I thank the Dory, thank Margaret, Rachel, Christian. I wanna thank Margaret for being here, sharing the presentation, Alex, Steve, right? I wish you luck. I wanna thank you all for sharing the comments today and unfortunately we didn't have power for the whole thing. Seven, all right, we turn.